All right, welcome everyone to the December meeting of the Bronxville Planning Board. Thanks to everyone for coming out. Our first order of business this evening is to approve the minutes of our November meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, good. Would someone like to move approval?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, so we have our November minutes and we can move on to the agenda tonight. We essentially have two items, I guess they're broken into three, but two items. And the first is 11 Paddington Road, a proposed addition. Is there someone here to speak on behalf of the applicant? And if you could come to the mic, please, and identify yourself.
Good evening, Catherine Zalantis from Silverberg Zalantis LLC. My firm represents the applicant. With me tonight are the owners of the project architect, Jaime Donate from the architecture...
Just one sec. The mic's coming in and out, so I don't know if that's something we can do about it, or...
And the project landscape architect, Renee Byers, from Renee Byers Landscape Architect, PC. So as an initial matter, we're before this board for review of a single-family home because the proposed alterations are altering 50% of the front-facing facade and also because the addition will result in the home being over 7,500 square feet in floor area. And I just want to, on that second point, so this board understands while the proposed floor area exceeds 7,500 square feet, the total floor area for calculating FAR is only 7,200 square feet. And really, the difference is semantics. So when you calculate floor area, you include the cellar. But when you calculate floor area for FAR purposes, you do not include the cellar. So that ends up being the distinction. But as this board knows, FAR is concerned about massing and size of the building, and in this case, there's not going to be that potential impact because the cellar currently is underground and will remain underground after the renovation. So the site plan more than meets the standards set forth in the zoning code in 31030, and I'll just briefly go through it. I set this forth in our presentation, but regarding the landscape and the environment, the applicant is proposing significant landscaping. Over 65 new evergreen and deciduous trees are being proposed. Regarding the relationship of structures to an open space, the proposed addition preserves open space. Only a 3% increase in FAR is being proposed. The home's length remains the same. There's no shadow impacts from the proposed addition. And the scale of the building, the existing building works with both the scale of the addition, both work together. And regarding the front yard-facing facade, the ARB, the applicants met with the, I'm sorry, the BAR on December 4th and received a favorable recommendation from that board that you should have before you. Regarding circulation and parking, there's no proposed changes to the existing access or driveway. Regarding protection of the neighbors, there's no net increase in stormwater runoff. Also, all proposed lighting will be low voltage and dark sky compliant. So before I turn it over to the project architect to discuss the plans specifically, I just want to note that we received comments from KSCJ. We received that November 15th 24 memorandum. The plans have already been revised to incorporate those comments and their minor revisions to the plans that the architects can review with the board. To the extent there hasn't been time to review the plans in advance, we are hoping that the project can be approved and site plan approval can be issued tonight, subject to making those minor revisions to the plans.
Mm-hmm.
And now I'd just like to introduce the project architect.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, I'd like to introduce the project architect.
Thank you.
So, sorry, may I ask one question?
Yeah.
You used the word, I didn't understand, you used "shadow impact" is the word you used?
Yes.
Can you just discuss that? Or maybe the architect will?
Yes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jaime Donate. Thank you for having us. Let me know if the mic is...
Unfortunately, given your height, you'll need to bend over for us to hear you.
I'll stand like this.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for having us. I think Kathy already explained the two reasons why we're here, so I'll just jump right through it. But maybe I'll do a very brief oversight of the site, so just for everybody, so we're talking about the same thing. Paddington Circle, Art is about, it's just under one acre. It's at the end of a cul-de-sac circle. The top right corner is that cul-de-sac. Our front yard is basically to the right of the drawing. And the house, the main house, the bigger volume that runs up and down the page, there's an attached garage that looks like an appendix into the right. And the setback, the front yard setback is right just outside of the garage. You can see it there on the dash line. And the, our project are a number of, you know, almost like surgical additions to the house. Most of them occur by, or take, you know, we're achieving them by modifying the roof lines, and they are all really dormers. They're not really, we're not changing the roof height. The ridge line remains the same. There is only one small addition in the back that is actually proper square footage, or footprint change. And Renee will talk about the side amenities we're introducing, but overall, there are a number of terraces, pool and spa, as well as landscaping. If I can have the next slide, I'll start with, these are the existing plans, so I think we can...
I think you're about to get some help with the mic height. Yeah.
There we go.
Now you won't have to stoop.
Now I can see. That's much better, thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. So these are the existing plans. I think we can skip through this unless I always come back. And this is the, okay, so this is the proposed first-floor plan. This is rotated from the site plan. The front yard is to the bottom of the page. So we're doing a number of interior manipulations, interior partitions to change the layout. But in terms of the exterior, there is only a small bump that happens at that front door that is right at the center. You see a pair of double doors. And there is really, there's a small bump there. It is all within the, of the house, that there is large eaves. So we're projecting out, I forgot the number, but it's something like 14 or 16 eaves. And then the other addition is on the back of the house. So if you go to the top right corner, the, there is a bump out in what is the primary bedroom and primary bedroom, dressing room, that is about 324 square feet or along those lines. So that is the actual, I would say, the most significant change in the footprint of the house. If we can get the next slide, this is the second floor. The, here what we're doing is that we're modifying a dormer that is to the bottom right of the page. So right, there's a small dormer, and we're expanding it. I'll show you the elevations in a second, it'll make more sense. Next page, this is the roof plan, we can, well, this, the roof over the, that I was just talking about is that darker shade. And the one that is kind of L-shaped at the top is the primary bedroom. So that's a one-story, you know, addition. Next, please. And this is a big house, it doesn't fit in one page, but this is where the garage connects to the house, is through a kitchen and a mudroom. We, this is the first floor, we are not changing the footprint, we're introducing a stair to take you to a second, a new second floor. Right now, the, there's a, actually, very large attic space over the garage. We're manipulating the roof or rebuilding the roof to introduce a second floor that lives within a dormer. And if you show the next slide, that'd be great. So the footprint of the second floor is a little, it's a little bit small, but, so that this roof...
It's going down, and you can see...
The, there we go. It keeps coming in and out.
You're doing your best.
And you can see how we have, it's really a home office and a pantry with a bathroom. And, but anyway, this all happens within the same footprint and is within the roof, it's really a dormer. And it's, it looks large here, but it's quite small. It's the size of a two-car garage, that's pretty compact. All right, and then the next slide, please. There's the roof plan for that, so next, please. This is the, these are the elevations of the main facade. So this is the facade that is facing the front yard. The upper elevation is the existing, the, you can see the, what we're doing is manipulating the windows in the, and reconfiguration where the entry door is.
The entry door right now is that single door that is arched and is like a pedestal.
We are moving right toward the bay window, or it's not really a bay window, but that large window is, and we're modifying the other windows to work more in, you know, more broken down, not just this large glazed areas. And then on the second floor, you can see that there's a dormer on the far right that's staying exactly the same. On the left, we are enlarging it. And we actually think it helps aesthetically, I think the Design Review Committee agree with this, how, you know, that dormer in the middle, it looks really puny. It actually helps to balance the house. But that's the work we're doing there. So the modifications we're doing to this facade is there's a very small bump out on the, on the footprint at the entry. It lives within the roof line, we're modifying the windows, and we're enlarging that dormer. And next slide, please. And this is the, because the house is L-shaped, this is technically the other front-facing facade or elevation of the garage. So it's really the side of the garage, this is not what faces the front yard, but the up, so the upper elevation on the left is the one that faces the front yard, and the bottom one, right below it, is the proposed. What we're doing is that we're changing the orientation of the roof, and I'll show you a rendering in a second, so that as the building makes a turn, that roof line carries across. Right now, I'll show you a photo too. Right now, they're, I guess they're parallel, the, when you look, yeah, right, right now the ridge lines of the house are parallel to the footprint. So when you look at it, it's like you have this kind of swoop shape of the buildings and L, but the, it looks like a, like you very abruptly stopped it. So we're trying to soften that and make it more, make the garage more consistent with the house. If we keep going, this is, oh, you can see it here, yeah. On the top left is the...
Assistant garage elevation.
On the side, as you approach it. So the house is that shape, that kind of outline on the right. Right below it is what we're doing, we're preserving the first floor and the garage doors, and above it, we're doing this slightly taller roof with this dormer. And the next, please. And this is the back. We're not modifying anything here other than the bump on the bottom left, that is that addition, and it lives within the width of the house, so we're not getting any closer to any neighbors. And then we're introducing, modifying some windows to create a new access from the center of the house to the backyard. And that's that pair of, you know, double doors in the middle. And next, please. And this is, these are all the elevations of the side of the house. Next, please. And this may be the most telling, the upper part is the...
The upper part closed.
Bottom are proposed. And you can see that...
The upper left is this, is that very big dormer. I was saying that it looks so puny and I was still improving that. On the, on the right, it's, this is a stair, you know, that garage is looking to be most of the house. It looks like a different structure, sometimes connected.
We're trying to make it more consistent and...
You have some continuity.
I think that probably covers what we're trying to do. If you have specific questions, I'd be happy to answer.
We'll probably have a number going around the horn, but a quick one. I saw on the construction plan that there will be access from 22 in terms of being able to get to the site that way. I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
I may have to defer that question to Renee. It's more of a landscape strategy for the construction of the pool equipment, or, not pool, the machinery for the pool and also the vegetation, but...
Yeah, just, that seemed an important aspect, so if you could comment on it, that'd be helpful. Yeah. You can bring it down.
There we go. How's that?
The closer you get, the better.
Closer, the better. Okay, there you go. So I'm Renee Byers.
Thanks.
Landscape architect, and also Bronxville resident for 28 years. So I'll talk about... Since you asked about access, we'll just start there. So we were able to get a special permission from the state since 22, the White Plains Road is a state road, to use, to make a narrow construction access off of that route, given that Paddington is such a small, discreet little courtyard on... Children playing on the block, and also primarily because the side yards are so narrow here that it really would negatively impact not only the construction itself, but the neighbors, just to have that to try and get trucks and things in that sort of way. So we took advantage of the through line on to White Plains Road, asked for that permission and it's great. And we do have a couple of trees to do that, and what, this site is comprised of a perimeter of evergreen planting, which is largely aged out. I brought some additional ones, if you want to see them, they're not in this package, but there are a lot of old growth evergreens that have maybe a little time... A bit of foliage. There's quite a number of hemlocks, which have hemlock over the delfit and the scale and they're, they're almost, you know, rolled out enough. So we'll be replacing that with our planting... Planting plan, which we can go through if you'd like, but the planting plan covers a pretty robust...
I think he's about to give you a fresh mic to see if that helps, we'll see.
Oh, okay.
Because it's been going in and out. It's not you. Apparently, you get two.
Wow, now I have two, okay. All right. Does that answer your question about access, or would you like me to talk more about that?
And if you could, while we have you, talk about landscaping, that'd be great.
Absolutely. So are you, do you have the power of the mouse there? So let's go to the next one.
Could I ask, if you could go back one...
I would go back. I think the best plan to start with is actually what you had at the beginning, and zoom in on the color, because it's just, that just lays it out very clearly. You can just zoom in on that upper rendering.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that odd concrete pad with AstroTurf on it.
That's, that's going to be, that's going to be removed. That was just a play, a play surface for a playset that's no longer there.
And does that, was that a permeable surface or a non-permeable?
No, that's non-permeable.
So is that reflected in the number?
Yes, that improves our coverage.
Okay, okay.
So this is the rendered site plan, and just to give you a little extra context, zoomed out a little bit from Jaime's detailed presentation, you can see that the two, the two areas, the two architectural areas of interest are the gray on the, on the plan. So that's, one is indicating the rough area of the dormer on the front, and on the back, that small bump out for the primary bedroom, that other strip of gray. So we are proposing to remove the existing patios, which we can, again, I brought another useful overlay on a board with me that shows the existing condition overlaid with the proposed. I don't think, we don't have that in here, right, the red and black, yeah. But anyway, suffice to say that there is a large, kind of unusually, a big round terrace that doesn't go well with the architecture of this house, and it juts out into the rear yard, right where it says "proposed rear patio." When that says "no change," that just simply means no change from the, from our previous submission, that patio is definitely, you know, changed. That is our proposed patio there.
But that doesn't mean the same thing on the driveway, there is no change.
There is no proposed changes to the driveway at this time, no.
Right, right.
That's correct. And that's something that we corrected in our, for our resubmital, but you don't have that. So the patio spaces have been reallocated to allow for sort of a living room, dining room situation. So the rectangle that you see where the proposed rear terrace arrow is would be a stone, a custom stone gas fire pit surrounded by some nice furniture. And then the patio area just going towards the swimming pool from there is designated for a long, narrow table. You will pass on your right an outdoor kitchen, which is existing and would just be upgraded a little bit in this scenario with different cabinets and things. And then we go into the, what Jaime has created and what we worked together on to do here is to create that through access, access from the front door, so you see the new doors right where it says "residence" on either side of the R and the E of residence, that's the, the front door and the back door that'll head right out into the backyard, so you'll really have a really, a nice indoor-outdoor flow. And that leads down a couple of steps and onto the pool terrace, the swimming pool and the spa, which is separate from, from it. With, you know, yes.
Do you have, can you show us on what the existing layout of the patio looks like, or is it on your...
I can. It's, well, if I, can I show you one of these boards to help you just see it in a nutshell, or is that, do I have to use these plans only?
Well, I think we have the patio here.
You have it here, but I, yeah, you do have it here, but ours has the two transposed, that's what would be handy, handy.
Yeah, it's like that would be helpful.
Yeah, it's so simple.
Thank you. Brought it this way.
Yeah, there it is, but so... I put this around you, but basically, this...
The red?
The red is that existing...
So this comes, does not come out as far?
Yes, it just doesn't...
Into the backyard?
And it allows us to have, to create this sort of grove effect of shade trees around the patio, so that this is all nestled in without impacting at all whatever family around here wants, a big, giant backyard.
Is that, is that why you put the pool where you put the pool, Renee?
That is...
Because it looks like it's sort of stuck.
Well, we don't want the pool in the middle also because this, this house has a lot of glass, and we don't like to put swimming pools in this climate anyway, dead center because a lot of the winter is when you cover it up, so it's not the best. But this really isn't that, I mean, it's, this is over, well, the setback's trying to be, we're certainly respecting that. So you have quite a lot of space over here, and it's going to feel like a really beautiful find to come over to that side for the patio.
Another question, this is really helpful.
Yes.
The, so the existing patio is in the red.
Yes.
So what you've done towards the pool is you're extending the patio, so you're taking away from the yard, the circular part, but you're making it sort of the whole backyard.
Cutting and pasting, yeah.
Yeah.
And then what we do, so you have, this, this patio is just, it's all paved, so it just feels vast and huge, but the space is on the ground. We introduced, which you can see on the color version, plantings, you know, in between. So you're really sort of like all-encompassed, you have a nice central gathering space, spa, but this is the big living room, and you just come right out, but, but you're still nestled within trees. So it's like three distinct rooms, so that you could be up here enjoying dinner and it gets to be plain, but, you know, you're, you're not widely topped.
And the pool is not, it doesn't, there's no pool there right now. Is there a spa of some kind?
There was a spa under construction.
Right.
Which is, has now been removed.
And what's the, what's the size of the pool?
This pool is...
Fifty-something by 16.
15 by... 51 by 18.
51?
Yeah.
First word of the conversation.
Okay.
51.
Okay, we'll let you get back, yeah, watch your step. Anything else you wanted to cover on landscaping?
No, I just wanted to stress that the site will be, we intend to make it extremely private, and there'll be beautiful evergreen plantings all around, and there should be no impact whatsoever on the neighborhood.
Yeah, since you live in Bronxville, you know this, but just for everyone's benefit, this strikes me as one of the most secluded lots in Bronxville, if you could just speak to that.
Right. Well, yeah, one of the great things about this is, is since our permanent entrance isn't on White Plains Road, you really aren't even aware of the, of the street. And that's thanks to that very deep setback. So we're, you know, we're privileged to have that spot and to have such a sizable lot with essentially everything very flat, so. And we've had Hudson Engineering is our civil engineer, and they've done a very comprehensive drainage study, and there's a whole storm drainage system of infiltrators, and so there's no impact on, on infrastructure beyond our borders.
So if there's anyone who could speak to the construction schedule, that was only other question I had, but go ahead.
Before we go, where will the, how will the pool be fenced in?
The pool fence, let's see if I can explain that from here. It is shown on here, we also have a fencing plan, but I think I can show you on this. So starting, starting on the lower edge of the sheet, you can see a gate. Do you, do you guys really need a laser pointer?
Yeah, we...
Well, we have it, it's visible.
Oh, okay, okay. That's it, yes, he found it, yes.
So it's basically the whole perimeter?
It's the whole rear perimeter. So it starts there, it goes all the way around the three sides, and it returns towards the, at the very top front corner of the house. Do you see going right past, right in the front?
And it's along White Plains Road, too, apparently?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, well, it's basically, it's the existing fence, where there is a fence now, we'll just be redoing it and making it very secure and solid.
You also have a chain link fence, don't you?
There's a chain link on the side because those are hidden by all of the plantings, and because the other neighbors already have their own wood fence yet inside of that. So we didn't, we didn't put a solid board fence on the sides, but we maintained the board fence that exists now facing White Plains Road.
And the neighbors that have the board fence are the bottom or the top?
The board fence neighbors are the ones on the top of this, this sheet.
Next to the pool?
Yes, next to the pool.
Right. And so what's the fence along that bottom border?
That is chain link for the most part. It's divided up into two different, two different neighbors are on that side. One neighbor is, has a retaining wall and a very high board fence of their own, that's three fortil.
Yeah.
And then one fortil has, which I actually did the garden at one fortil a number of years ago, that was, that's for the Detweilers, they're not there now, but that has a thick evergreen planting on this, on this inside edge. And then they have the walled garden, the, the brick wall that fronts on White Plains Road.
Right, right. But three fortils got, there's a grade differentiation.
Quite a bit, yes.
Yeah.
You're about, at least four feet higher there.
Yeah.
So they have, they have a retaining wall, and then they have a fence on top of that.
Right.
We don't, sorry, this is a, I've only been here a couple of years for the planning board. We don't need, you don't need a special permit for the pool?
No.
Because we've had issues with people putting pool in, and then there's all sorts of water issues on neighbors' yards, and we hear about them.
No, this, this pool is...
What's the, what's the depth of the pool?
All as of right.
The deepest?
I believe it's eight, either eight or nine feet at the deep end.
So it's like probably the size of half of, this, this half of the room?
Oh, you mean the length?
Yeah, 51 feet? That's pretty big.
Yeah, pretty big pool. But it's a very lot, you know, it fits the site. It's appropriate for the size of the lot.
Other questions on landscape side before we get to others? So yeah, it's probably the architect... So, yeah, it's probably the architect who could speak to the construction plan and timing? That'd be great.
Do you have a schedule, right?
Yep. Maybe you could pop up that schedule, Christina?
Yeah, it's probably.
Near the end, I think.
Pages down.
It must be there, it must be there at the top. It looks, it looks like this.
It's at the end of this one.
Oh, it might be a different.
After the memo, right, after the memo.
It's this one here.
There you go.
Last, no, yeah, keep going, pass that, ask the questions and answers.
In which direction?
Well, it's the last, it's, well, in mine is.
Here, Michael, we can.
Next, next, next.
There you go.
Uh-huh, thank you.
There we go. Okay, so, within that duration will be about nine months. We are looking to start ASAP. We have a contractor who's ready to go as soon as we get our approvals and building permit. We anticipate, you know, some demolition where there will be some shared overlap between, you know, demolition of the house and demolition of the existing, you know, not really landscaping, but more of the hardscape that's there right now, this elevated patio. So, that, that's where the, sorry, the bottom section is landscaped, the upper section in blue is the house. So, there'll be some overlapping demolition and then, we would, you know, we would basically start working on the foundations that, the parts that were actually expanding the footprint. We'll probably start with the house and then work, make our way to the garage. And the sequence is pretty conventional for construction, starting with, you know, demolition foundation, framing, and then, you know, closing the building and doing mechanical, electrical and plumbing, and then, you know, ending with finishes. But it's, it's pretty linear in a traditional way. The, we foresee the landscape coming in, in the second half of the project and basically, I, I don't, I don't know exactly what the strategy is, how basically make our way out of the, of the site. But there'll be some kind of clever way to, to do that.
Okay. All right, let's throw it open for other questions from the board. Well, if there aren't questions now, why don't we hear from our consultant who reviewed the plans, please?
Good evening.
I, I think, I think you're at the mic that doesn't work as well, so, yeah.
Rick Bolander, KSC and J. The only, there was a few remaining comments, minor comments, just really cleaning up, you know, adjusting limited disturbance lines, tweaking the landscaping just to avoid underground utilities. But we have seen preliminary plans and those comments have been addressed. The stormwater design is a robust design. They've done a heck of a job. Obviously, we're all well aware of the water issues and runoff issues in the village. They have more than done their part in helping out with the stormwater design. It's, it's very, done very well. So, no real additional comments on our end.
Okay, go ahead.
There was nothing, Christina, from any of the neighbors? No pluses from, I'm sorry, no pluses, no comments from the neighbors? So, I guess my question maybe for, maybe not for the owners, but for the architect is, it's a pretty substantial square foot house already. And it seems to me, now you walking us through it, which has been very helpful, it looks more like you're just making it look more attractive than trying to add more rooms, right? Because now that you showed those couple of slides, I thought it was very, very helpful for me at least, to see that it was a lot of cut up and.
Right, I mean, we, we, we had a mission to add square footage and we were conscious of it and purposely didn't want to make the house, A, actually be overbuilt, but also appear overbuilt. So, we, we found ways to do a lot of this work by basically modifying the roof line. And it's all really modifying these dormers, the, the house has a language of dormers and we're modifying most of those to basically fit in the, the square footage. Like I said at the beginning, all we're like, footprint wise, that we're adding is 324 square feet, which is not that much.
And, and in the basement section, I saw that there was a, there's a playroom, gym block, and a bathroom, and then there's a lot of crawl spaces. Is that because it's just, there was no intention ever to dig that out and make that a?
That's right, and it's, it's elevated, it's properly a crawl space. It's, it must be like four feet high and you have to climb, I mean, it's, you have to climb and then there's exposed framing, I mean, it's, it's, it's a true crawl space that is, for some reason, it was never excavated. To gain square footage there would be a monumental task, you know, if you were to use that. You have to rebuild the house, like, this is an old house, it's, you have to reframe all that or support it somehow, it would be enormous.
And just, just to answer the question I had, just more curiosity, what's shadow impacted?
Oh, yeah, so, so there is.
Assuming that sight line from roof, because the roof line's not increased?
That's what, that's what we're trying to say, yeah, that, because we're not really going higher, we're not really casting shadows on any neighbors.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? If not, I would just point out that we also got the memo from design review and that seems like a favorable report. Maybe with that then, we'll open up the public meeting, see if anyone from the public would have anything to say about the, the project.
No one wants to stand up?
So, seeing none, we will close the public meeting and I think go into our discussion here. Who would like to start us off?
I'll start off. I, I think this is very straightforward. You know, you're really not increasing the square footage all that much and in some ways, I think you're making the front of the house match the back of the house. So, and, and we talked about the FAR and we also talked about the, the requirement for 7,500 and, and so I think those are both addressed. And I think the landscape design is, is going to be great, so, very much in favor. Straightforward.
Shall we keep going?
Yeah, I've, now that I've seen the plans, thank you so much. Really happy for you guys, it looks great. I think the pool area, the design you have with the shaded areas is going to be amazing. Look forward to seeing it one of these days. That's pretty cool. Good luck. I'm in favor if we, if we vote.
Other comments?
I appreciate that the work is all within the existing roof lines and so, I, I don't think there's any substantial changes there. I actually like the change of the roof, rearranging the roof line over the garage. I think that works well and, and extremely complimentary on getting, of the idea of gaining access to the backyard through 22. That, that just blew my mind. I think it will relieve a lot of the congestion going into a cul-de-sac. So, I'm very supportive of the application as is.
So, I am typically always looking for some way to be critical of the design, but I, I think it's actually quite a nice improvement, for sure, in the front facade. I think taking, enlarging that, what you called a puny little dormer, really has a huge impact. So, I think it's, it's definitely an improvement and the, the FAR issue, I, you know, as long as you're, you know, within it, I, I think that you should be, you know, applauded for the clever ways that, that you've improved the property without, you know, going over the FAR. I, I think that the only comment that I had looking through the facades is that on the front, there may be some variation in the proportion of the lights on the windows that I think is almost better in the, in the rear. They're a little more standard in the rear. The dormer lights are just quite different on the second floor from the first floor. But overall, I think it's, it's nothing that anybody, you know, would really pick out, so, it's, it's not something that I would, you know, draw attention to in, in any other way, just to say, take a look at it. If there is a way to make it more consistent, I would recommend that.
Jim, anything to add?
No, I don't have anything to add. I was at the design review committee and I can echo what has been said about that group basically endorsing the aesthetic and design features.
Yeah, and the, what's been done with the garage strikes me as particularly clever, the rotation, but also the use of the upper, upper floor as an office, gives you more space and yet, doesn't visibly change, you know, what you're doing and that's something that I think we all like. So, would someone like to make a motion?
I'm, I move you approve the plans as submitted. I guess subject to the final drawings being submitted, not raising any issues, which I don't think is likely.
We're, we know Kevin's on the spot to help with that.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck with your project. Okay, our next order of business is, I believe it's T-Mobile, is that right, Christina? At Iona, some changes to the antenna and then also the five-year renewal. Do we need, Christina, do we need to deal with those separately or?
Um.
If, if we could look at them as a package and that would, I think, be fine here.
Yeah, as long as the resolution reflects both, I think we're fine.
Seems like one works and one doesn't. It's good to have.
Yeah, I was trying to make sure I knew which one. Hi, I'm chair and members of the board. My name is David Kenny. I'm attorney with Snyder &amp; Snyder, here tonight to represent the applicant, T-Mobile, in connection with his application for a five-year special permit renewal and what is known as an eligible facilities request, which is to modify or replace antennas at the existing facility. As shown on the plans, T-Mobile was the first install at the, with the former Concordia College and they had actually a stealth design where they created these faux copulas around the top of the building and all of the antennas are located inside. The replacement antennas will stay inside, so there'll be no visible changes to the public. Here tonight to answer any questions the board may have.
Go ahead, Tom.
Can you give us a little bit of background as I was reading everything and, so, these are replacing the antennas, correct?
Correct.
What, what is the purpose of the antennas? Why does this building need four different antennas on its, on its roof? And, and I guess there were a couple of concerns. The first concern is the impact of the, I was going to say radiation, but that's not the right word, on, you know, street level and other places. And that seems to be satisfactorily. And then, the structural component of what these antennas sit on. So, can you give us some background as to why they're there?
Sure.
What we should be thinking about as far as the structural issues or the, just the transmission issues?
Sure, absolutely. So, the antennas here are for the wireless network of T-Mobile. So, it's not for the building or for the property particularly. It's essentially, instead of building a cell phone tower in, in this area, what a lot of carriers try to do, and I think they're encouraged by the communities that they go into, is to find existing tall structures to locate their antennas on, so that, you know, eliminates the need for a monopole or 150-foot tall steel structure to support the antennas. So, essentially, the, the building is, is our cell tower and then, the, the copulas and all of that was designed to, to reduce the visibility of the antennas. So, the antennas are there for T-Mobile and their network. Verizon and AT&amp;T also have, I believe, antennas there as well. So, it's, it's for the surrounding community, the, the T-Mobile customers.
Do they pay rent to?
Absolutely. So, they have a lease with now Iona College, as they took over, so, they, they have a lease and it's, yeah, they pay rent.
Okay.
And then, as far as the transmission issues or the radio frequency emissions, so we do submit with our application an FCC compliance report that confirms that the emissions from this facility, and again, they do it based on a worst-case scenario calculation, operating at full maximum power, at full capacity, which almost never occurs. And under those circumstances, they've confirmed that even in those scenarios, that it would still be compliant with the FCC rules and regulations with radio frequency emissions. So, based on meeting the FCC standard, it's deemed safe for the public. There's no areas outside where someone could stand where they're going to hit an emission levels above what the FCC has deemed safe.
And that analysis includes all of the AT&amp;T, T-Mobile?
Absolutely. It includes what we call emissions. So, there's, the FCC sets standards and requirements for how they do these calculations. So, if there's any emitting, kind of transmitting, kind of receivers or antennas within a certain area, you have to include the emissions from those as well. So, because there's other antennas for other carriers on this rooftop, they're absolutely included in the report. Regarding the structural, they really looked at the, the mounts and stuff and then they also did for the structural platform. The, the building itself, we did submit response to some comments, but essentially, the building is, is more than sufficient to handle this type of load that's being put on. But we've confirmed that the existing mounts and the existing platforms are also sufficient to, to support that. And that also kind of puts forth that the building is able to continue to support this way.
How much bigger are the new antennas?
Let me see if I can get you.
I mean, they look bigger on the diagram, but.
Is there a page she should flip to in what we're looking at on screen?
That's what I'm trying to confirm right now. If you go to A7 on the plans. So, this is the FCC compliance report. Yeah, all the way to the plans. This is the structural. Yeah, and then, A7.
There it is.
Okay.
And I think those are the older plans that we submitted. We submitted updated ones. And the, the updated ones have the, the existing antennas and the proposed antennas.
Oh, right, they were.
So, I, I have them right in front of me, I can go. That's the proposed size and the proposed weights right there. So, those are the dimensions being, you know, 55 inches tall or a little bit over 55 inches tall, about 11.8 inches wide and about 7.12 inches deep. The existing antennas that are to be removed were, one set of the antennas was 55.9 inches tall, 12.08 inches wide and 7.87 inches thick. And it's about 83 pounds, whereas the proposed one we're putting up is about 35 pounds. And then, the other antenna that's being removed, there's two models, that one was significantly larger, larger. That was about 78 inches tall, 14.8 inches wide and about 9.5 inches thick and that weighed about 135 pounds. So, it's about similar in size to one of the antennas, but these both antennas will be removed, the existing ones. So, the one that's going in is, in combination with both of them, they're, they're smaller.
And is, does this relate to 5G service or is this?
So, it's upgrading for the new network. The new network standards are 5G, so this will include 5G capabilities.
Just a couple of questions. You propose nine radios versus the current six?
Correct.
When you talk about, is that, we're talking about the, you're going to put more, is that antennas or radios or?
So, the number of antennas are staying the same, so it's six to six. The radio units are, are being added. So, these remote radio units, they essentially boost the signal and transmit radio waves and convert it into the signal that goes into the wireline. So, they assist the antennas, they make the signal stronger. They don't necessarily increase the coverage radius, but they increase the signal level within the coverage radius. This is part of the 5G network that's kind of increasing the density of the network, so you can have higher capacity. A lot of people make cell phone calls, but that's not all we use for cell phone calls now, versus streaming, for using video chat. So, all of that, you need higher capacity in your network and that's what the radio units help to.
And I see there's existing Verizon and AT&amp;T antennas. That has nothing to do with this project?
Correct. That's a different carrier, they just utilize the same.
They obviously saw this is the right place to put it.
Absolutely. And unfortunately, their antennas are not located in the copulas, so their antennas are outside of the copulas, I believe, just on the back of the, whatever that front kind of penthouse bulkhead that is.
Yeah. And then, and then, maybe it's more for the, we don't have our attorney here, one of the questions you guys had was, you want to waive a public hearing?
Well, we've already submitted the public notices, so we did originally ask for a waiver of the public hearing, but the waiver wasn't granted, so we did do a fully public notice hearing.
So, there is going to be a public note?
We're here.
Yes.
Okay, so this is it, okay. Thanks. So, this is, so no one showed up? Okay, so this is it, okay, thanks, so this is, so no one showed up?
At least so far, we haven't opened the public meeting.
Never know at the last minute.
So does this mean, I have no more questions, just, just one more, I get one more question, does this mean that T-Mobile will be the thing to have in Bronxville now?
It'll-
If, if we say yes?
As it's my client, I would absolutely propose that T-Mobile is the, is the carrier.
It's, it's quite likely that we will be seeing the folks who are co-located with you, I'm sure, over time, they will be at other-
Thanks for answering my questions, thank you.
Generally, all of the carriers upgrade their, their facilities every five to six years.
They'll be here eventually.
The other part of the request, I think, is a five-year extension, I think every five years you come back to have this approved and that's a requirement too.
Absolutely, so, part of our original approval was a special permit, and that special permit comes with a requirement to renew it every five years, so we've also asked for the special permit to be renewed.
Yeah. Other questions before we bring our consultant up for just a quick report?
I'm actually just curious, how did, how did T-Mobile get the sort of pride of place in this cupola when the other guys are outboard?
So they were likely as the first installation, there was probably a review done to see what are the ways that we could hide or kind of stealth the, the antennas, and it's, I think this was originally installed about two thousand, two thousand and one, so I, I think at that time, the planning board in connection with T-Mobile may have, you know, come up with that design together, or T-Mobile may have proposed that design to meet the planning board's standards for reducing a visual impact from the antennas. The copulas are limited in space though, so the other carriers, I don't believe, could fit their antennas within there, and if you tried to stack them, there might have been some interference issues, so there just wasn't space for them.
What was that?
It was Sprint.
At that time?
Yeah, Sprint and T-Mobile merged in twenty nineteen, so they are now one network.
Other questions before we bring up our consultant? Yes, so if we could just have you provide any comments you might have on the application, please?
The first comment actually was about the, the public hearing, I think we've answered that, addressed that. Our second comment was just about notification to the county, we don't anticipate any comments from Westchester to the, the planning board, but just as a, a courtesy, they should be notified about that. There was also some requested waivers, which we had no objection to, is the signed lease between the advocate and the owner property in lieu of providing a lease, copy of the FFC license and the visibility assessment. Again, no objection to the, the request for those and the granting of those waivers, and we have reviewed the bond estimate and all the numbers make sense, so we had no problem with the, with the bond.
So what, what is the size of the bond?
It was seventeen thousand and eighty dollars.
Okay.
And we reviewed that and it, it makes sense.
And what was, why was the bond needed?
Removal.
Just, just-
This is for T-Mobiles?
Yes.
For which there are no plans, so it's just-
Come out of our collective monthly payments.
Yeah.
Any questions for our consultant?
Nope.
If not, I think we'll go ahead and open up the public meeting. And seeing none, I think we'll close the public meeting and open it up for discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't see anything on which we could exercise our discretion and there just appeared to be a couple of requests for waivers, which the consultant mentioned. So I think I have no objections to this, these two proposals.
Me too.
Likewise.
I, I appreciate the design of the radios and antenna sitting within a cupola, so they're not exposed and, and I think we should be encouraging other ingenuity around these types of structures within the village and so I'm fully supportive of continuously renewing this proposal.
Yeah. So I think what we're looking for is a motion that captures both the approval of the changes to the facility and also the five-year extension, would someone like to make such a motion?
I, I move that we approve the T-Mobile application for a five-year renewal of the antenna site at Iona University and the equipment upgrade also proposed with the waiver of the lease submission, the submission of the FCC license and the visibility assessment.
Do we have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, our next meeting will be in January and for everyone's benefit, we are shifting to six-thirty meetings in the new year.
So does that mean you're going to bring sauces and peppers for us?
So we will see all of you, it sounds like, in February. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So move?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Unofficial.